September 26, 2024. Before I ask you to stand, tonight's moment of silence is in honor of Suicide Prevention Month. In this country alone, in 2022, almost 50,000 people took their lives because they didn't believe that anybody cared about their problems moving forward. So tonight, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will do a moment of silence for those that do not see the value in life. So, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, as I always do, I will begin the meeting with introducing your Village Board of Trustees, starting at the far end with Trustee James Freiband. Next to him is Trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him is Trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is Deputy Mayor Vic Ferrelli. Next to him is Village Clerk Jessica McLennan, and I am your Mayor Andrew Giacamazza. We will jump right into public comment on agenda items only. Tonight is a very minimal agenda, so if anybody has anything to speak about on tonight's agenda, speak now or forever hold your peace. Once, going twice. Okay, moving on to administrative business. Can I motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on September 12, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of abstract. Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract eight?
Abstract eight contains vouchers 24250705 through 24250789, and totals $220,264.52.
It's a mouthful. All right. Can I motion in a second to approve abstract eight as read?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Trustee Fabro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have no old business, under new business. We have a liquor license request. Notice was received on September 9 from Falkirk Estate and Country Club located at 206 Smith Clover Road in Central Valley from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. I would like to state for the record, a letter was sent to the Police Department to determine if there was any reason why the village should object to this application being approved, and they stated, "There have been no issues or concerns to prohibit the application." Therefore, I will instruct Village Clerk McLennan to please send a letter to the State Liquor Authority with that information from the Woodbury PD." And that has been read into the record. So, authorize mayor to sign the MS4 interim progress certification. So, can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an interim progress certification from form acknowledging compliance with the new MS4 GP, general permit requirements, and various six-month delays?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. More stuff for me to sign. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor? Looking at you, Jimmy. You've been here long enough.
Mayor, we're talking about...
Oh, yeah. Oh, boy.
Oh, no, you have competition in Brigadoon.
To sign an easement between the Village of Woodbury and Hamaic... Is that the right pronunciation? Haspik, okay, of Orange County.
Motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Finally, one more thing for me to sign, an agreement with Nelson Pope and Voorhees. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an agreement with Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC for planning services and final inspections of landscaping installations at the Woodbury Villas subdivisions, phases 3A, 3B, 4, 5, and 6?
Motion.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
Sure.
Is the red line in the contract done by the village attorney?
I did not redline this contract.
Have you reviewed the contract?
I haven't reviewed the contract. Do you mean the parts that they have crossed out?
I didn't know who did, that's why...
Oh, they crossed it out, and you did.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I have one additional item, resignation of Tim Finnegan, Fire Safety Director. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the resignation with regrets? The resignation of Tim Finnegan as Fire Safety Director for the Village of Woodbury.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Record time. That's it. All right, public comment. Public comment. Lisa Hince is first up to the back. Is that mic on? No. Thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen and scholars.
Hi, Lisa.
How about now? Hi, everybody, hi, everybody. I am wearing two hats tonight, sorry about that. One is our Reeds Across America. Wanted to let everybody know, sales are picking up. We had 202 that we needed to get us to our final count is 823, and we've got about 156 more to go. So I've got a couple fundraisers coming, so we should be in good shape for December 14th. Hopefully, it's on everybody's calendar. Come on out for the ceremony, lay some wreaths, and just remember our veterans. Now, my second hat is our Climate Smart. I wanted to thank everybody that came out for the community cleanup. Wasn't a huge group, but we got some stuff done. And Rob, thanks for picking up the big bright orange bags that were left in who knows where. So I appreciate that. Let's see, it has come to my attention that our Climate Smart has a website that people aren't aware of. So just to let you know, we have a website, it's kind of similar to our Facebook page, but if you wanted to keep up on things we're doing, it's just CSCwoodbury.com. And so you can post comments and whatnot there. I wanted to let everybody know that we met the other night, our meeting. Our Climate Smart is collaborating with the Monroe Woodbury High School for what they are calling their sustainability warriors. So last year, Matt and Natasha Wozeniak met with our high school advisors. They were interested in us working with them. We're going to do a four-point lecture series with them on the topics of... Our first one is fast fashion, which is basically sheen, kind of that cheap crap that comes out, excuse my language. And then we're going to do food scraps, water, and PFAS. And then we're going to wrap it up with a panel of our political, our mayor, hopefully Tara Chrisikis, you know, and some political aspects where they could have a panel and shoot some questions out with them. So it's a great thing that our youth are involved. We're going to end all four sessions with a piece of hope for them, because we know some of this is daunting, but we're going to end everything with a piece of hope. And we're going to offer some tables where if they wanted to do some community service or some additional information, there'd be some tabling going on. Important, if anybody's interested, we've got our Junk in the Trunk, which is basically a mobile free yard sale. It's going to take place at St. Pat's on the 19th. It's a Saturday from 10 to 2. We also are offering what is our Coolest Recycling. We've got three dates, that's anything that has coolant in it. So I know we had a dumpster out at the senior center. Sadly, it was a missed opportunity for the public to know that they could have left the electronics out. Rob's doing the electronic shred on the 12th of October. So that was a missed opportunity, I think, for our town to have notified our general public that our residents' coolant should have been left out of there, electronics should have been left out of there, and the junk in the trunk would have been another way as opposed to throwing some stuff out. But, next time. So our Coolest Recycling, we're going to start on Columbus Day. We're going to also collect on Thursday, and then our last collection day is on Sunday, the 20th, all of October. We're doing a sneaker drive. If anybody, kids went to school and they've got used sneakers that could still be repurposed, any sneaker actually can be recycled. There's a box outside the village hall, and there's one at each library. Lastly, we're going to end with our Pumpkin Smash. We're going to be doing that at Sweet Clover Farm. You guys knew it as the winery, Paella?
Paella.
Paella. I always screw that up. The Woodbury Fire Department's going to be there with a surprise way to smash pumpkins, and that's going to take place on the October, November 9. From, let's see, the fire department's going to be there from 11:30 to 12, and we're starting at 10. And then lastly, we are working on rescheduling the PFAS. We had to cancel that due to our manhunt in town, and we are going to schedule that for November 20 at the senior center. So, thank you, everybody, for listening, but those are your upcoming events for your Climate Smart.
Thank you, Lisa. And now I have a craving for paella. All right, anyone else? The floor is open. Wait, this is the perfect time. Just for you, John.
Usually do it for this guy.
Oh, Neil, no. Neil's usually licking his plate up there, knocking somebody over on the way up. It's all good.
It's a bad day today.
Go ahead, John.
I hate rainy days.
I love rainy days.
I just want to shout out to Rob, say thank you. Lexington, Hamilton Avenue, your guides, and the contractors did a wonderful job. Street is great, spotless. They even asked if everything was great at the end of my driveway. I can't say enough about it. You know, you say you're going to do something right, you do it. So kudos to Rob, you know, really. The other thing is, there's going to be a blood drive here. I'm sure you know about it, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
The ambulance tour is doing it. This is way ahead of schedule, but it is October 13 here. Posters and the flyers will be out shortly. They are already made up, but please stick your arm out and let us...
Thank you, John. All right, anyone else, public comment? Jimmy Ng?
I got lots of bills, get to 11. I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Jimmy Ng, Holland Mills, Saint Bemare of the Brigadoon. So, you're gonna hear a lot about this from me, election day is in 40 days. Please go out and vote. I've been guilty in the past where, you know what? My vote's not going to count, but you know, we may not sway the election for president, but we are sure going to sway the vote for trustee. And we know what the issues are out there, okay? We know who stands for what. Don't be the one at home the day after election day, "Damn, I should have went." You know, residents here know, we've seen elections determined by single digits. So as far as, again, the issues, a comment was made last week by Trustee Freiband that this was... Your response to my question was political? No, Sue, it wasn't political. As a resident, I came up here and asked a question of the board, and you responded for the board, not Sue Suriello, not for anybody individual, you responded for the board, and I thank you for that. Please don't answer this, okay? Please don't answer, because I know, I'm sure you have a legitimate response. For me, I'm baffled as far as me asking the question about the taxes, you responding it, and then certain individuals double down. For me, that's just like a sign of desperation. But my issue here is really, again, we're a small village. I don't know what the population is here and how easily it is to sway a vote. I keep telling everyone, you know what? We are the block. Woodbury is the block. I don't care about any other block, so who cares? But as far as what goes on here, I'm sure all of you know BJ Mendelson, Brandon Mendelson. You know, I don't agree with everything he says, but he does draw a lot of facts out. And I'm sure I'm not going to get a response, but when you get significant campaign contributions from somebody that does not live in Woodbury, from a neighboring community, I have concerns, okay? I mean, I'm sure everyone knows who I'm talking about, Meyer Hirsch. Why is Meyer Hirsch contributing such a significant amount into Woodbury elections? He likes us? He likes the people here? It doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know what is available as far as campaign oversights, because that gets, becomes dangerous, okay? When, trust me, you know what? Anyone throws a significant money, amount of money my way, I'm going to look upon it favorably. That's just human nature. There is no way you're going to vote against it. There is no way you're going to work against their agenda, and that scares the hell out of me. But then again, to Woodbury, let's not worry about that situation. Let's come out and vote on election day and prevent that issue from ever happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. Staidere Muslim, Central Valley resident. Talking about voting and election, it is our obligation, it is our obligation to take it serious, especially now due to this, what we see going on in the social and political area. So for me, the way, as I said, I was due to my daily life or whatever, I wasn't that involved in the politic of the town. But now, as I'm getting more involved and doing my research, and one of the methods that I have, considering what I observe in the community, in both the village and the town, is lots of talking, rumors, gossips, and the division among the people, that the energy is not positive. So for me was, and because of my field of study and my life experiences, especially the one experience I had in this town, is just instead of listening to these rumors and just asking, hearing things from other people about other, you know, this candidate is that, for me, the best way is direct, you know, interaction with the officials. And I've been giving that idea to, I go to senior center, why don't we invite the officials to come and answer our questions? And it is our obligation to inform ourselves, what they stand for, what their policies are, and also this issue which is at front, you know, that the village and the board. One of the things I did, I called, I've been meeting with, you know, different officials. I called Mayor, Mayor...
Yeah, don't use the word my last name.
No, Gia Kumaza, right? Because my last name and first name is not easy, so I... So one of the things, one of the, among other, you know, people, I called him. The officials, when they become elected, they have to have the connection with the people. It's not just that they're elected, they go, they sit in their office, and we hold them responsible. My experience sharing with the community members, I'm contacting different officials, going there, talking to them at the same time, the people in the senior center, other areas that I know, and other officials, I just try to go and see them in person. My experience, I have to admit, with mayor, I left, I sent him an email, and I, you know, followed it by the phone call. He got back to me right away, and then he made the appointment, he made the time. When I got here, that smile that you have, and that happy face that you have, it was a welcoming, coming in, "I'm here, ask me," you know, openly. I talked what my concerns are, what my issues are, and also there is vast amount of knowledge that we can have, and working with them that they are in that area and asking our questions directly really can give me, you know, the basis on the why do I want to vote? So at least I can sleep now. So thank you, mayor, and that was a...
It was my pleasure.
Thank you. And that was, you know, productive one, and as I said, I'm working on meeting more people, even for the community. We have the senior center, if we have, you know, it seems we are disconnected, we are not united. And also, I believe in peace and harmony, and at the end of the day, with all due respect for the all officials here, at five or six or whatever overtime you guys work, you put the hat on, you go back, it's not a village or town, we are all part of this community. That's what it is. So we have to learn, you know, what, you know, we are adults and just the differences we have, that's necessary, that's good for the growth. But at the same time, we have to have discussion, we have to have a difference, differences. And honestly, last time, I was embarrassed, because having the differences of opinion with the board members, we have, the respect has to be there, no matter what, how much we disagree. Trashing the characters and/or creating an environment that people are afraid to ask their questions is going to help the rumors to be spread more and more and more. So that being said, I have a question, I did some about the comprehensive plan. So one of the things for me, I go to the source, this issue of the village and the town, how did it started? What was the cause? What is going on? What are the sources of differences now that the scoop is come, this and that? So I think I have a question for Kelly, that as a legal, you know, about the comprehensive plan. And that was adopted, once the village was formed, it was, the village took over the comprehensive plan. And I read the latest version, which is 2021, that's where it was updated, right?
I think so, the hotel over there.
Yeah, so I'm learning, I'm learning. I think I looked at the... So basically, I said, "Let me see how the story starts," whatever. And what I see, what was, why the village was formed? So there were, according to what I read, correct me if I'm wrong, there are two specific issues, this is exactly a quote, prompted the need for an updated need for an updated comprehensive plan, development of the Woodbury Common, and the pressures associated with rapid growth. These are the two issues that was mentioned in that comprehensive plan. And then there was the talk of the vision and how you, you know, the village that took over the zoning and planning, and I have a question. Zoning and planning are the one that make the final, especially planning decision, who comes in, who built what in the town, right?
Well, this board sets the local laws regarding zoning and establishes the framework for people to develop in the village, and that should be based on the overall comprehensive plan, which funnels down into the zoning laws. The planning board reviews the applications that are made to it in accordance with the laws that this board adopts. And it is the village who has that responsibility, not the town in this instance.
And honestly, one of the things, so the bottom line in a simple term, whoever comes here, buy a land, do a development, do something, wants to do something, at the end of the day, is the planning board that approve it or disapprove it. Am I right?
Depending on what they are looking to do, for the most part, it would be the planning board. They may need to just go and see the building department and just get a building permit from the building inspector, or they may need variances, and they may need to go to the ZBA, but for the most part, yes, those uses would require a site plan or a special permit approval from the planning board.
So the burden mostly is going to be on the village in a way that if there is a pressure of growth and the development, the burden is on the village board and the people involved in that.
On the village board, yes.
What needs, not the town, right?
That's correct.
I see. That's what the village does. Sometimes we take the responsibility and we don't know what we are accepting.
This board would set the zoning as to what they expect and what they would like the village to look like.
I hear you. And also in that, that's what I said last time, the more we ask our questions, the better it is. I think, what is this village law seven? I, Mr., I'm sorry, the last name, Mr. Freiband, when mentioned it, what is the law that you wanted to say something last week that you didn't, that the village law seven? What was it that you want?
It was introductory local law seven.
Oh.
So we haven't even passed it, addressed it, anything yet.
Oh.
That was what we did at the last meeting, was we introduced it, sent out the referrals. I think, we didn't do any secret action because it was not required at the time.
Correct.
And I think that, and we scheduled a public hearing.
Oh, we're gonna have a...
Which will be in the next meeting.
Next meeting? Oh, okay, okay. That's what I said, I know. And also, who was the, there was an advisory plan, advisory group that they were formed to oversee the, you know, application of the comprehensive? Who were the advisory board? I couldn't see it on the...
The Woodbury Comprehensive Plan on page two lists all the people that had worked on it as part of that committee. I'm not sure if that's the question.
What are the names? Who are the people? If we have questions?
That committee is, I think, is over with. When they adopted the primary bulk of that comprehensive plan, that committee was pretty much extinguished. They weren't around anymore, disbanded.
Oh, I see.
If small updates had been made by the village board, they didn't require a comprehensive plan committee to review the plan in its entirety.
So it is legally, you know, officially, everything was done to the best of the ability of the board members to come up with the plan that satisfy the vision and the needs that was talked, that was talked about it in that thing. One of the things, I looked at the vision, and these are my questions, especially what's going on. And it says that, at that time, it was 2007 or 2009, and the writing was the vision for 2020. Usually, they do it 15, 20 years. So when I read it, and I said, because one of the things, we have to evaluate our work. Some companies, they do it five years, 10 years. And it is interesting when I read that, and my question is, did we achieve that in this thing, in this town? And one of it, in the town and the village, and I know you guys on the comprehensive plan, and is on the, you know, the visions and all those things, and one of them, because one of the things, correct me if I'm wrong, from Woodbury Common, where the Board of Education ends, in a way, that is our main, we don't have a main street, that's our main area that, you know, we come, and there are not that many businesses that, you know, or there are not that many places that people can get together and just chat with each other or at night, especially for our young people, like a main street. And I see in the vision that, you know, that was one of the things in the comprehensive plan, maybe we should just, you know, be, just, you know, remember what we want, what we envisioned, and focus on that, see what is achieved, what is not achieved. When people come, the developer or whatever, then, you know, we can try to do that, because one thing that is really lacking, in my opinion, is an area, let's say it's nine at, is 8:00 PM, I want to go have a coffee with my... Is Deli was there, but it's more of an enclosed area, and I see those vision is not accomplished to me, at least when I read it. So that being said, overall point that I have is, let's be more, the rumors, the gossips, this, let's get, I mean, try to not get involved, because our energy would be wasted. Let's put our energy into helping each other, working with each other, accepting, and if the mentality is... the mentality is, uh, I came here in 1700, or I, I immigrated here, this, we are, this is a country of immigrants, doesn't matter what year I came to this town, or what, what time I came to this country, what matters is, is built by immigrant, and the people who are in the community, doesn't matter if I came in 2000, or 1980, or whatever, I'm a member of this community. Let's accept each other and work together, get the best resources and build it up, especially for our, you know, next generations. Thank you. Now, I, I have a question, Mayor, about the ethic committee. I saw the members are there now. The name of the members of the ethic committee?
Ethics meeting, they're all there.
They are there. And can I ask, if you don't mind, I know it is formed already, and only the names are there, and how many years they were, how can, would it, would it be possible if they come, they introduce themselves, so we know them more, or just what would be the best way to know them more, interact with them more, and start having a relationship? That would be good, that would be one of the area. And also about the beautification committee, Maria Hunter, I see, is, I don't see, I know she's, you know, we have a beautification committee in the town, and she's doing, she's there, she, I can go on the site, it seems it's been there since 2000 something, but the one on here, there is no, it's good to know, for the beautification, you know, what is, what needs, what is done? How is done, and how, if we want to get involved, to make the place more beautiful, which is, I love the beauty, how can we be involved in it, in a positive way?
Well, I'll have Maria come up, she can give an update.
Okay.
On what she was working on, because we had a meeting this Wednesday, so that'll give you some ideas on what they're working towards.
Okay.
Okay? And I'll have to think about what to do with the ethics meeting. We may have to do a mixer, maybe that's what we do. I'll get you guys together in a room, and, and I'll maybe, listen, nobody hears, everybody's empty-handed here tonight, correct? Nobody came with pastries? This woman.
No, no, he was so generous, I brought some cake, you know, the Adam's Farm, and he said, put it for, I'm going to give it to the community tomorrow, I said, okay, you are so generous, whatever, but, that's what it is.
Not good to my waistline either.
What you said. So I really appreciated, these are the things I had in my mind, and hopefully, you know, we would be, you know, and I'm talking to people in the senior center, to invite people to bring the candidate, no matter how much they disagree, we are, you know, cultured people, we just sit and we ask our question, that would help us to make our final decision. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
All right.
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Lisa Melendez, I live in Highland Mills, I've been here for over 16 years, and the lady that stood up here before me had alluded to the comprehensive plan, and that was really something that's been on my mind, um, as of late, because I wanted to find out from the board specifically, um, how much of it, it should be a North Star for whatever we approve in this town, right, in the vil, in the village, right, it's a blueprint. So, in your experience, since you've been here, how much has that been utilized? Do you refer to it? Has it been something that you've used as a tool, and a way to leverage your approvals, or the projects that had not been approved? I've noticed that there have been some businesses popping up here and there, I wouldn't say that they add to the community in any way, um, I certainly never go in there, I mean, I, there's an ice cream store on 32, that doesn't really look like an ice cream store inside, and I just kind of question, oh, I don't know, I don't know what, what, what that, what that whole situation is all about, but, um, there's a distinction between development and improvement. And when we have that conversation, we need to really be clear about, it doesn't mean, when we say we are not interested in overdevelopment, in urbanization, we're not saying we don't want improvement in our town, we're saying, we want improvement, I mean, we, we, not that we don't want development, but that we want improvement. We want to, we want to grow our town in a way where all our citizens, all our residents, are able to have quality of life, right, an increased quality of life. So my question is, is the comprehensive plan actually on the radar screen? Are we going to be talking about it in the future? And legally, is that a tool that we can use, to really...
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because I don't really, I, I wasn't really hearing that piece in, in our conversations, and I'm always wondering how towns such as ours are able to, what tools can we use to legitimately serve our needs, and really speak to what the community is asking for, right? So, and I, one of the things I remember is that you, you, you asked for feedback, when we were working on the comprehensive plan, and I loved it, because you were listening, and you were editing, and you were get, it was a, it was a two-way conversation. So I would just encourage you to really take a look at that again, and when you're making decisions about development or projects that are coming before zoning and planning, that that be your North Star, because it was a great plan to begin with. It's been a long time since I read it, but I'm going to have to review it again, but I remember that I was, I was okay with it, I, I was happy with it. And, and again, let's look at where we are, um, what boxes have we checked off, where have we gone off course, and really think about that. This is a tool we have available to us, created by us, and let's not let it just be another document.
So I think that was fantastic, because legally, I think it was, it was fantastic.
I do want to say that it is something that the, that the planning board always, we tell them to take a look at, keep in the back of their mind, because that is the guide that came down to the zoning that they have to follow. Comprehensive plans should be fluid documents, they're typically reviewed every five to seven years.
Right.
And to get input from the community, specifically, they are required to have at least two public hearings, but this village, when it had made those original, like the bulk of the document, had, what, surveys, I'm looking at Neil, he should, I think he was on that committee, there were surveys, there was a lot of public input on it, so when they do...
Robin Kraus.
Robin was on it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Neil will just take credit for it, Robin Kraus.
And Neil's like, wait, was I on it? No. All right, Robin was on it, the Krauses were on it. I would say, when this board does take that up again, um, they're always looking for volunteers, so it might be something that you would be interested in, but I did just want to say that it is something that is referred to, it's referred to by the planning board members, it's referred to by me, it's, um, referred to by this board, when they are approached with those things. One thing that I think is important is, it does shape the development of the community.
Yes.
But one thing that the board really can't control is, who's going to come in? They can, they can talk about types of development, but they can't control which of, you know, a specific retail or something is going to come in, they really can't control that, and they also can't dictate that, but they can dictate what type of development is important for a certain area, so, um, I don't know where she went. Mrs. Mazlam was talking about a main street, and how to create things like that, and that's certainly something that, you know, was in there, and when the committee is formed, when the board takes a look at that, they should look at what the goals were, are the goals still the same, what was achieved?
Right.
And what the community wants to see next.
Yeah, I think that that would be a great update. And then, also, I want to, I had a question about the Chamber of Commerce, is, is, are there any communications between the Chamber of Commerce and the village board? Because our businesses, as a whole, as an entity in the town, is a really important component as well, um, and I, and I kind of, I don't really see them being part of the conversation, um, and so I'd like to see diversity of businesses, is what I'm saying. So I, I, and I don't really see that, I lead, I see a lot of, of the same kind of business coming to town, and so I'd like to see diversity, and I wonder if there are any conversations between, you know, like, who's, who's, who's asking to, to, you know, buy a business, or start a business in the ta, in town, or in the village, and what, what's that process looking like, in your opinion? How, how has that been over the, the course of the years? Is there a trend? Because I feel like there's a trend, um, and I, and I was curious about that. Finally, my last comment is, uh, I've been knocking door to door, asking people if they've been registered to vote, asking them if they're attending the meetings, I am guilty of not attending all the meetings, but I do watch you on YouTube, so, it's not great watching, but sometimes it can get entertaining, I have to say, um, but...
What do you say about me, I'm the entertainment guy.
Oh, yeah. Um, but what I will say is that for a long time, residents have been very made, very aware of a tension that has existed between our two boards, and, um, it's, it's demoralizing. So I'm hoping that as we move into saying goodbye to this 2024, move into 2025, that there be a reset of mindset, because when we are divided, we are more compromised than ever. And I know that everyone who sits at these tables are here because they want the best for our community, at least I am, I'm, I'm prepared to start there. And that's what I want to believe. So I thank you for your service, I know it's not easy to sit in those seats, and let's get a look, let's take a look at the comprehensive plan, because that's the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Maria Hunter? Highland Mills?
Thank you for the introduction.
There you go.
Couple things, as Secretary to the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, we have five members who are executive board members, we're all volunteers, we try to do the best we can in having meetings, and daytime, evening dinners, it's very difficult to get the business owners who are members to come out to these events. We do have an event coming up, October 29th, it's Meet the Candidates. The chamber hasn't done this in a while, it is not a debate, we're asking the candidates for senate, assembly, town council, town justice, and village trustee, all the candidates that are running. All invitations were sent out today, by me, the secretary, um, yeah, we're going to ask, the candidates are going to ask to come to the event, set up a table, they'll help, there's 11 candidates, members of the public can come out and talk to them, ask them questions, then we're going to have a few minutes for each candidate to do, introduce themselves, tell them who, what, where, whatever they're, what they're running for, and then after that, the residents can speak one-on-one, once again, with the candidates. Reason why I'm saying this, and I will say it on every meeting until before, until the night of, residents, you keep asking questions on Facebook, you ask each other's, you're getting the wrong information, come out to meet the candidates, ask them directly what they're running for. Jimmy, I hope that helps you, because I'm going to be butt right behind you, telling people to come out to vote. If you don't know the candidates, and you don't understand what their platform is, then you don't know how you're voting. The other thing for the chamber, we're doing a trunk or treat, it is on Halloween, October 31st, it's gonna, October 31st, Halloween night, both of these events are going to be in the St. Patrick's, one, one is in the parking lot for the, for the trunk or treat, we do have a Facebook page, look up Woodbury Chamber, we do have a website, make sure you look for Orange County Woodbury Chamber, not the one down in south of us, and we have information on there. We've been trying to update with new members, we're trying to get the commit, committee, not the committee, the members of the committee to come out. It's been difficult, it's been a rough couple of years since 2020, we have not really had a full continuation of meetings, and, and so we're trying. What a hat do I want to wear? Oh, beautification, as everyone knows, yes, I'm on the town of Woodbury Beautification Committee, been there for 20 years, it's different than what the village beautification committee is. As I met yesterday with the mayor, the highway superintendent, the buildings and ground personnel of the village, we met at Oak Clover, Oak Clover is across from the diner, if no one knows where Oak Clover is, it's the circle, we're going to be doing a lot of work in the next couple of months, then we're going to step back to where the archway is, the archway is going to be repaired, not re, it will be removed, but it's being repaired. So I'm telling everyone now, it will be back up, if you see it missing, it's going to go back up, and that is a promise that the four of us made yesterday. And then the other project we're going to be working on is Wayna Vista Circle, the four of us went there, we looked at it, we have some plans, I have to put my notes together, I haven't had time since yesterday, and, um, I will be the catalyst to keep everyone in line, and we're going to be working with our treasurer to make sure that we're doing the right thing, if anything is going to, what's it going to cost, and what estimates are, okay?
Perfect, thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
Susan McConnell, Highland Mills, this question is for trustee Freiband. Can't help but notice, when your constituents come up to the podium to ask or speak of the board, you have yet to make eye contact, you continue to look down, write, type, what was the platform you ran on to be elected?
Well, my point is, I try and give you the respect as an elder, as someone in a position on a board elected, but I'm your constituent, as is everyone in this room who came up to speak this evening, we deserve respect as people who voted for you, actually, I didn't vote for you, but some did, we deserve the respect of the people you're working for. So, next meeting, next time someone gets up, take that into consideration, you would like us to respect you, but that, as I told our supervisor, flows from the top, we will show you the respect you show everyone else.
Tom Powell, Central Valley.
Welcome back, Tom.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I miss you.
My, mine is more an observation than a comment on what's going on in Woodbury, but, um, a few years back, in Slotesburg, there was a, a part of a parking structure that collapsed, and if I'm, I'm not really 100%, but I believe it was related to the salt that the state was using to, to clear the upper parking lot. Now, my concern is, we have a parking, a five-story parking structure right here, that one's only a one story, was a one, it was a one-story, and they removed it because they have to replace it, for some unknown reason. For the thrower to do anything, um, you know, without an explanation, it's hard to believe, all right? And that's, you know, like I said, that's on their rest area down there in, uh, Southfields, but I'm looking at, over here, at Woodbury Commons. Now, we got Woodbury Commons that's in front of the building department, and the zoning board, and a couple of other places that want to put in a parking structure. I'd like to know if we have anything on the books that's going to require them to have annual or semi-annual, um, or every five years, an inspection of the structure? So we, what happened down in Slotesburg doesn't happen at one of the largest tourist, tourist destinations in the state.
So building code has a set standard for parking garage inspections? We supersede that and require it to be more often than the minimum set by International Code Council.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was, there was something on the books about that.
Yes, yeah.
Because as a first responder, I don't want to see being directed there, because with everything that's happening like down in the city, with parking structures collapsing and stuff like... and stuff like that, we don't need that.
Yes, they have a structural engineer come in annually and review this condition, especially after the fire that occurred there two years ago, a few years ago. And they, they come in annually and check for any deficiencies and they have to obviously address the deficiencies.
Alright, thank you. And another thing, can we, why does not our police department show up at these meetings? Why are they only showing up at the other meetings? I mean, that makes everybody in this room have to go to two separate meetings if they want to complain. That's not right. I think there should be somebody from the police department present in the room that can answer questions. I mean. Right?
But I certainly can request it because I am getting a bit more calls to me about speeding. I got an email this morning about speeding. But I've been dealing with Chief Watson, he's been, we've been going back and forth with the emails that I do get, um, sending them to him. Problem areas, they've been the same problem areas for a long time. Your area is a problem area with the speeding. Edgewood is another problem area, Charlotte Road's another problem area, Smeth Clover, whatnot. So it's certainly a request I can make.
Okay.
It's, it's an ask.
And again, I'm just gonna throw it out there that October 13th, from nine to three is our blood drive here at this building. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Department comment. Mickey is, I guess, dealing with an emergency. He would have said, I've got nothing, Mr. Mayor. There he is. Mickey Phillips, how do you think?
I do. So the village has almost completed four months of the fiscal year, and I wanted to give a brief update on the financial status thus far. Tax collection is at 96%, which is quite amazing. Uh, late notices were mailed on September 3rd, and the last day to pay your taxes at the village is September 30th. Any unpaid taxes will be then turned over to the county. Occupancy tax collected for the first quarter totaled $105,508. We had budgeted $150,000 for the entire year, so I am anticipating a healthy surplus on this line item. As you know, this is a new revenue source for the village, and as we go year by year, that will get better history so we can budget accordingly. We received two aid payments from the state of New York, the $27,000 aid and incentive for municipalities, which we always receive, more commonly referred to as AIM. And we received $1,889 for temporary municipal assistance, which was something that our State Association NICOM fought for all of their members to get some additional funding through the aid program. We have received a $2,500 grant for the fire department from the DEC for brush firefighting equipment. You all previously approved that purchase back in May, that was actually purchased in June. We had a, it was a matching grant. We have now received our share of that money. And we also received the $5,000 money from NYSERTA that, uh, did she leave, there you are, that Lisa spoke about last meeting. That money did come in this month. Uh, we, our interest is doing very favorably. At the end of the first quarter, the general fund has earned $48,000 in interest. We had budgeted $150 for the year, so I believe that we should be realizing a surplus, pending no craziness with the state and the rates and the federal government and all that kind of stuff. Uh, as treasurer of the Chamber, which is one of the hats I do wear, I will tell you that there are five executive board members, and those five executive board members, in addition to being on the Chamber, also are on many other depart, things. They're on the WCA, they are on, um, the Lions Club, they're on the Knights of Columbus. Some of our volunteers are volunteered out. So we do try our best to get our members to attend meetings and events. We try our best to, uh, you know, for a while there, we were doing murder mystery dinners, we were doing sip and paints to try to advertise our businesses and get the community involved. And unfortunately, if people aren't there to help plan those events, your organizations dwindle. So it's there, it's just hard to get all these people that do so many things everywhere else, you know? Like Jimmy said last meeting, I wear a lot of hats, I can only spread myself so thin. Maria wears a lot of hats. Dan Lux is on the executive committee, he wears a lot of hats. Joey Jean Zero, we all know he wears a lot of hats. Uh, Krista Belly wears a lot of hats. Those are your executive board members of the Chamber. We all are doing the best we can. Unfortunately, it's, you can only get so much right sweat out of a whatever, I don't know the saying. Anyway, um, the soon-to-be town clerk, Nicole Young, has asked me to remind everybody that election day is coming as well. Early voting is October 26th to November 3rd. The closest location for us in Woodbury to early vote is the Monroe Town Hall, and there are seven other locations. You can vote in any of those locations, you don't have to vote in any specific location. So if you're shopping up at the Crystal Run and you want to go to the Middletown location, you can. I have, it's pretty cool. Uh, election day itself is November 5th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There is, surprise, surprise, once again, a change in location of where you vote. Uh, the only one that's changing is those of you that voted at the gymnasium at St. Patrick's Church will now vote at the Monroe Woodbury Education Center. So, 2, 3, and 9 vote at the Ed Center. Nope. 2, 3, and 9 vote at the Centrale Firehouse. 6, 7, and 10 vote at the Senior Center. Everybody else vote at the Ed Center. If you do not know where you vote, uh, or what district you're in, you can call the Board of Elections at 360-6500. And there is a proposition, proposition on the ballot this year, uh, usually is when it's a presidential election year. It is called the Equal Rights Amendment. I strongly urge you to read that proposition before you vote. I'm not gonna tell you how to vote. Um, if you want to ask me after the meeting, I'll tell you how I'm voting. Uh, but you should definitely read it because it will affect you, your children, your wives, your sisters, your nieces, your mothers, your grandmothers and whatnot. So please read that proposition and educate yourself before you flip that ballot over and vote yes or no. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me?
Nope.
Excellent.
I don't have anything.
Hi, good evening. Want to talk a little bit, very, very briefly, on the comp plan and, um, some of the things that you'll see happening or have seen happen. So the senior housing overlay, that's part of the comp plan. The hotel overlay, part of the comp plan. Uh, water quality protection overlay district that was passed in 2021, part of the comp plan. So most of the zoning changes you'll see made by the Village Board are in alignment with the comp plans with Kelly McShore, is that they align with the vision that the committee set out for many years ago. Um, what I will say, um, is I watched, and just some of the comments even here tonight, um, I watched the last planning board meeting, the public hearing for the senior housing overlay, and the confusion amongst residents about what the role of each board is for land use is of utmost concern to me, um, because that's where all of the decisions happen that affect every one of us. So, um, I know I mentioned this probably twice now, but tentatively on the schedule is a land use open house, um, for October 28th. It will take place here. Residents, uh, members of our zoning and planning boards will be present, uh, to answer any questions. There will be a PowerPoint presentation to walk you through the development process to understand, uh, what purview, what board has what purview. So the Village Board sets the laws. The planning board's job is to approve projects based on the law set by the, the Village Board. They have no authority to change the law. So to have people from the, the residents and the community come up at the last Village, uh, planning board meeting and say, why did you vote for this change? When are you up for reelection? That's a little concerning considering none of those members are elected, they're all appointed volunteers, and they weren't the ones responsible for passing the zoning change that is this board. So, um, that's just some of the comments that I, I saw, and it was a very contentious meeting, and I, I will say, um, I understand the members of the board, they listen to everything you say. Village Board took every one of your comments to heart and made the best decision for the community that they thought was, at the time. And the planning board, um, I, I would know, I'm married to the chairman, um, they take these meetings and these comments very seriously, and, um, it's best to come educated. So that's why we think an open house would be beneficial, so that everybody's equipped with the best information and knowledge to make educated decisions, um, and to come to a podium and, and ask the right questions, right? You have the board only twice a month, ask the right questions so that you get the, the results you desire, or that you hope for. Um, also, one other thing, uh, when you say that people, the Village Board is not attracting certain businesses, as Kelly mentioned, and I know we spoke about, I used to speak about this a lot when I was on the board, um, you can't, you can't control who wants to open a business in Woodbury, right? So you can only control what businesses go where, right, based on the zoning. And even then, you have to be careful because if there's certain applications pending, you can't change zoning because you don't want something somewhere because then problems can occur. Um, so you do the best you can based on the comprehensive plan and the input of the community to say, we think these businesses would be best suited here, but then you have to get the private sector to come out and actually open those businesses, and that's where the struggle has been. Um, we are disadvantaged because our main road, as, um, I don't remember who mentioned, it was Lisa or Miss Muslim, that, uh, our main street is a state road. That's never going to be a Cornwall or a Monroe with, with Lake Street. Um, and that's always been our challenge. Um, but I think considering, um, the Smith Clover corridor has, in recent years, been trying to, to, to revitalize a little bit, um, and maybe that's where the focus should be in, in the future, because I don't think 32 is tough. It's tough with the traffic and, and, and the trucks, and until you get the trucks off 32, I think it's gonna be impossible. But that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, and, uh, thank you for your participation, it's wonderful. Take care.
Okay, going out to the board. You know what, we'll start with the Deputy Mayor, Vic Forelli.
Thank you. Okay. Again, I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. Can't say it enough, that your comments, uh, we do listen to them, they do mean a lot. And I just sit here and I listen to everything that everybody's saying, take down some notes for future meetings and just really want to see more of it, more participation from the public. Now I want to update you on a couple of businesses that I've talked about in the past, Sweet Clover Farms and Who's. Over at Sweet Clover Farms, they've been busy cleaning up the brush and debris since Palaya closed down. It's only been a couple of years, but you'd be surprised how the stuff overgrown in that couple of years. So they've been doing that. And as Lisa mentioned earlier, they are holding a Smashing Pumpkin event, where I don't know what that is, what that does, but it sounds like a lot of fun. So, and that again is gonna be on Saturday, November 9th, from 10 to 12. Okay? They're also putting, you know, getting everything in order so they can go in front of the planning board so they can officially open up. Um, so they're not there yet, but they're, they're getting there. And then for Who's, um, they're currently working with the State Assembly member, Chris Ikes. There's some issues on Route 32, the right-of-way issue that they're working through. He also has to do a dye test on his, um, septic tank. So once that's all said and done, he'll be back in front of the planning board so he can get approval to open up. Okay? Again, both of these businesses, both of these owners are very happy and excited to be here. They want to do business here, they want to be part of our community. So, uh, hopefully the next couple of months, I'll have some more, uh, updates on them for you all. But, uh, again, they, those owners are, they, they're ready to get going, so hopefully we'll, when they do open up, we'll get another people out there to support them. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, Trustee Sereal.
Did you, to your, you said, something, sorry. To your point, you said something to the effect of, people say, when, my vote doesn't matter, or it won't count. Okay, so I can tell you from personal experience, it does. Uh, back in 2019, when I ran for the town board, I lost by four votes. So to say your vote doesn't count in a local election, you're right, maybe in a presidential election, it may not swing it. But in a local election, it's vital. So, your point is well taken, and I just wanted to give people a personal example so that they know how important their vote really is. So I thank you for that comment, because I brought that up. Uh, Lisa, you say, um, you know, you listen to the meetings, just a suggestion, because I do lis, I, I cannot attend every meeting, but I do listen to every meeting, and it's great accompanying it to a walk. So every morning, like, the planning board meeting was what, almost three hours last? I listen to it an hour a day over three days. Um, occasionally when I'm cooking dinner, I will do it, but I find it annoying when my son comes 10 times and interrupts me and I can't focus. So the walk is a beautiful thing to do, so just a suggestion for you, if anybody, or anybody. Climate Smart Task Force, I, uh, um, I contacted Smith Clover this week because we want to do a second tree planting. Uh, we did hear back from them, which was pretty exciting, and they're just trying to determine where they would like the trees, so hopefully by the, we'll have some kind of, some kind of date. It's, it went back on now. Some kind of date planned. Uh, I'm also working on getting EMS on the fire department, recruiting opportunity into the high school. We did that once before. Hopefully by the next meeting, we should have a date. Um, we'll have both EMS and the fire department going in, they'll go into some of the health classes, and then they'll be able to, um, set up outside in front of the cafeteria and actually interact with the students and hopefully get, you know, those young volunteers to come forward. Uh, last week on Friday, I, the governor came at Horizon, at the Woodbury Commons. So one of the things they brought up after the ribbon coming was that they have a Horizon foundation that makes, uh, donations back to, uh, local, the local community, uh, donating to be a 501(c)(3). So I looked at that, um, Dan was there, so we did give them the information for the Lions Club and the WCA, but, uh, there was some question about the food pantry in Highland Mills for 501(c)(3). Um, but I did get confirmation from Mary Rataste that they borrow 501(c)(3). And, uh, I went back and provided the information to Horizon for that. The reason why I bring that up is because one thing that Mary said to me, that it would be great if they got the donation, because they're struggling to feed 75 families. So, uh, I remember probably two, three years ago, they were feeding 50 families. So if you think about that, that's a 50% increase in their volume. So I guess, uh, anybody, and, you know, maybe drop off to the food pantry, have a push for everybody. Also, we have these blessing boxes, and I, I frequent that and bring stuff to that. It's in the parking lot, I buy it right on the backside of the Ed Center, you drive up, you open it up and you put it in. I think it's a very, uh, nice way for people that can just walk up and maybe grab something. I try to bring snacks for kids, if they're still in the school, and maybe some parents might be looking at KI, you know, alarms, or food snacks for my kid who had that, child who had that for lunch. So I just wanted to remind people that those two, the pantry and blessing boxes. Final note, just to mark account, we have two productions coming up from the high schools, our local high schools. Monroe Woodbury is going to be doing the Three Musketeers, which will be on November 15th and 16th. Today was callbacks, and I think we'll have a special tomorrow after school. And Cornwall High School, November 7th to the 10th, will be doing Harry Potter and the Purse Child. And just a little background on that, the research I did, Cornwall, not only are they great actors and singers there, but they actually won, there was a contest where they had, the applicants were asked to describe why your school or community is the most magical place to produce this Tony Award-winning play. And they were, they are the first high school in New York State, and only one of 29 schools across the country that were chosen to do this, uh, to do this production for the first time this fall. So I think that's gonna be a lot of traction to our market count, November 7th to the 10th. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trustee Sereal. Trustee Serra.
It's still working? No, this one's working. It's got one, it might die, that one bar. So this past weekend, I want to thank everybody who came out to the reservoir for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Walk. That was a very successful and moving event. Um, I believe they've raised up to $31,000 now and counting. You can still donate, um, it's on the website, you can just Google it. And, um, that was, that was great to see the community united around that event, and all the speakers and everybody who came from around the county, it was very touching. Um, and also, circling back to Climate Smart, we had a great cleanup, but you know.
There's more work to do. People looking at the future. I hope to see some of your faces there. Their next cleanup, we could definitely use you. And most of the events Lisa covered, so I'm not going to go back over them, but they are on the website, cscwoodbury.com, or you can go on our Facebook page. Everything's on there. Flowers are up. Duncan and Trunk is the closest one I can, October 9th, and the pumpkin smashing. And I'd like to wish those who celebrate or practice a happy Russian holiday.
No, this works. Okay, that's better. I'd like to thank you all for coming out. I like hearing the comments. I like hearing the feedback. We don't always all agree with each other, but it is taken into account as the whole board sits up here. We sit here, we take notes, we listen to you, and we do value your opinions, even when we don't agree, or when we do agree. To Jimmy's comments earlier, I'd like to reassure you, I ran for this board because I want to do what's best for Woodbury. End of story. Nothing else. And I hope my voting record has kind of maybe given you some confidence towards that direction. Maybe if you're having, you know, a bit of skepticism. I can understand the public being skeptical, especially, you know, we're new members. We haven't been here that long, me and Jim. And some previous members have been involved with the community, you know, for quite a bit longer than us, and they've been up here a couple of years now, so maybe folks are more familiar with them. I hope as time goes on, the public gets to know us better as well, and maybe some of that positivity comes back that Said was talking about. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. I would like to just, again, state that I do take careful notes, because that's, my engineering background is that's how I cement the ideas that are being presented here. I'm not ignoring you. I assure you that I take detailed notes of everybody's comments, whether I agree with them or not. Other than that, thank you for the amazingly quick meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Fryband. First, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Tim Pinnian for his service to Woodbury. He's been with us for over two years now, roughly, as a fire safety director of the village. He is moving on through the near cashless, and it's a West Point Fire. So, he will be missed on my side of the table. I'm sure he'll be missed on the town side of the table. So, I do want to thank him. I also want to thank, you know, it almost seems like a year ago, but there was a maniac running around Woodbury, murder suspect who was armed and dangerous. And we had several government agencies, including our own Woodbury Police Department, that all came together to make sure that it was not being managed much longer. So, I do want to thank those government agencies that were involved with that, that kept people updated as possible through social media. There really wasn't a lot of information coming out, but I'm just pulling things from different locations. So, finally, as Trustee Farrow stated, we will not have a meeting prior to the Capore and Russian holiday, so for all those who are Jewish, I wish you a blessed holiday season. And with that, with no further business than these thousand comments received, I motion in second to adjourn this meeting. All right, all in favor. I, A second, Chuck Norris, Chuck Norris. The next meeting of the village board will take place on October 10th, 2024. And remember, Chuck Norris counted last year from Oxford first to April 2nd, because no one calls Chuck Norris. That's it. Good night, everyone.